I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm Mayor Mark Landman. I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience, as I said, and those online as well, too, as we called order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council, as well as the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce my colleagues in the council, as well as the staff who will be serving you tonight. I'm joined in the diocese by Vice Mayor John Deloso, Councilmember Susan Harvey, and Councilmember John Moore. And unfortunately, Councilmember Skilman has a family medical emergency, so join me in wishing her the absolute best tonight. We're being served as well by your city staff, led by City Manager Damian O'Gidde, City Attorney Robin Donahue, let's see, Community Development Director Vicki Parker, who's hiding in the very back almost. Let's see, Mr. Scott is not here tonight, but hiding even farther behind her is Chief of Police Michael Parrish, and next to him is our Administrative Services Director Norm Veloso. And with that, last but certainly not least, over to my right at the control center, we have our Deputy City Clerk Lauren Burgess. So with that, City Clerk, I'll ask you to give us a roll call, please.
I will show Councilmember Skilman a absent. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Very good. With that, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a special guest tonight. I would like to ask 2017, Ms. Sonoma County Christina Schmal to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are to item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving or reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And I'm looking to see if I have a motion on this?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Do we have any public comment in the minutes tonight before we continue the vote? None? I think this might not be the time, but hold that thought, I'll remember. And if anybody does want to speak at a later time and you think, just ask, especially I see some new faces, we'll be happy to clarify the process, because it's confusing for people who are new. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that carries 4-0-1 with one absence. Let's see. And we are next to item five, which is a reception, and I find it described as an joyous refreshment, such a beef reception for the new mayor and vice mayor, but really more importantly, this is a time, at least from my perspective, to honor our outgoing mayor and all the work she did for us last year in 2017. So I'd like to invite my colleagues, if anybody would like to comment. We have the outgoing mayor in our crosshairs, so now is the time. This would be a good time to look back on the year she had. Would you like to start, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'd be delighted to start. I just don't know if I'm supposed to call you Councilmember Harvey, or if I call you most recent mayor Harvey, but anyway, Sue, let's start with that.
It works.
I know that works. Yeah, I really want to thank you. Leading the meeting sometimes can always be challenging, and there are times where we have controversial issues on our agenda. We certainly do the best we can with staff work and recommendations, our reading of this, talking to citizens, getting input from citizens, and listening to people, and then coming up with what we think is the best solution for that particular issue. So I just want to thank you for your service this past year. It was great sitting next to you over there where Councilmember Moore is, and...
You didn't get away from me, did you?
And no, and then here you are again for another year, right on my left again. I don't understand how that works, but we'll see what happens next year. But again, I just want to thank you for your service. Your committed long-term service on the council, but especially last year as mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey, I think you did an admirable job in that position, and it's not always easy trying to maintain decorum and move forward with issues and presentations, but I think you did a nice job on that, and it's a pleasure serving with you.
Well, I'm unsurprisingly going to agree with my colleagues here, and just go a little further and say I truly appreciate, it's clear to me, the extra hours of work, the extra meetings, the extra phone calls you have to deal with, and the extra phone calls those phone calls generate, basically just the much larger general additional level of work required to do a good job as mayor. And it just always pleased me every time I looked, you were doing a great job as mayor. On a personal note, I will say I was very impressed throughout the year with the calm and thorough manner which you consistently ran the meetings. I think personally that's a great example, and I'll be thinking of that this year and hoping my best to try and do a similar job, so thank you very much for that. And with that, I can ask you to hold that just a second, and we will have public comment in just a minute, I will get to that. But first... Actually, this is just her water pill. I'm very pleased to present this to this rather handsome man, and thank you again for your great work. Now, I believe we're going to take a break and enjoy this and have some cupcakes, I understand we're promised, but first I will open this up to public comment if anybody would like to speak on it. Ms. Alderman?
I would also like to thank Susan Harvey. She was very good at keeping a calm-as-can-be demeanor to these meetings, and she did her best. I'm not very happy that Mr. Landman is mayor, as he breaks the Brown Act almost every time and doesn't respect us, and he's...I'm just not pleased at all that I don't think it's going to be a productive year when you can go off the agenda at any time, and I hope he's learned from Mrs. Harvey how to run a meeting. Thank you. And it's December 9th, not December 10th. He said December 10th.
January.
January.
Between the two of us, we'll get it right, don't worry. Thank you for that. Mr. Berge, did you wish to speak?
Please, thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Berge, I'm a former city councilman here. I'd like to thank Mrs. Harvey. I think last year you did a very good job, given the difficult circumstances. I feel last year was very contentious in this room many times, but the beauty of that is that is how the system, our system of government, works, and I think that you appreciated that. There were times that I, as a member of the public and taxpayer, wished that maybe you would have held some of the council members accountable for some of their antics, but other than that, you were very punctual, your attendance record was fabulous, almost rivals mine, you know? And it's a tough job up there. You were duly elected to the city council. The other members here were appointed under interesting circumstances, and they were re-elected, with the power of the city hall behind them, and the propaganda machine and so forth working for the incumbents, but you have a special position here on the city council, because you were duly elected, you have worked hard, we don't agree on all the issues, and I do wish you a very good year this year.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. All right, before I close, public comment, I'm going to look out one last time and see if anybody else would like to speak. Not quite. Well, there'll be more opportunities, don't worry. All right, with that, we're going to take a brief intermission, have a small reception. Please enjoy yourself, and I understand there's some snacks, so please help yourselves. It's amazing, the one up at the board of supervisors makes no noise whatsoever, hardly. This thing rocks. Before we get started, I'm going to invite the council back to the chairs, and I'd like to ask all of our hard-working staff if we could stand up back here behind the council. I'd like to get a group picture of us for 2018, if we can intrude in the public's time and get this done quickly. You saw the picture? It does look a little shiny, huh? Oh, well, all right. Scooch in, guys. If you cut the chief out, remember, he carries weapons.
And poor Wendy.
Smile. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, with the picture for Halloween, right?
All right, with that, we are to item number six, which is announcements. And our first one is a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance of the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or any of its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Our next announcement is that the city of Kattati has special open office hours, Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 by appointment, in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current business owners, and those interested in starting new business in the city. So if that's you, give us a call. The Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are, of course, free and certainly open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call them at (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, and that's N-I-X-L-E.com. And the city of Kattati offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages with our recreation department. You can see details on our website at kattatcity.org. And lastly, two events I want to announce. You're all invited, come join the police department for Coffee with a Cop. Coffee with a Cop will begin again on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018, at Starbucks, 640 East Kattati Avenue, starting bright and early at 7:00 a.m., a good time to have coffee. And lastly, the Kattati Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a sock hop dinner and awards night on Saturday, January 20th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the Kattati Room, located right next to the police department. Come join in honoring the Kattati Police Department, Rancho Doby Fire District, Kattati Large and Small Animal Hospitals, and Kattati Supervolunteer Stephanie Richardson. Any questions, please give the contact, contact the chamber at (707) 795-5508, or you can just email them at chamber@kattati.org. And with that, we are to our honorary mayor, and our honorary for this month is Annabelle Dane of Lawrence E. Jones Middle School, so let's give her a great big welcome, folks. Welcome. So, Annabelle, come on, step up. This is a time you can just tell us a little about yourself, your background, what you're doing at school, how you wound up here, having to speak in front of all these people tonight, and whatever you care to share.
My name is Annabelle Dane. I'm an eighth grader at Lawrence Jones Middle School. I am very interested in art and writing, and that's what I want to pursue in my life. I think I mainly got chosen for this because of my good grades and involvement in the drama program at my school, and I just want to thank whoever chose me for choosing me.
All right, so tell us a little bit more, what sort of hobbies, what sort of interests do you have?
Well, I draw as regularly as I can, and I like to write stories and stuff, think up new ideas for some fantasy world or something that I plan to write a story about and don't get to usually.
Right.
That's, you know, I play games and do other stuff that normal kids do, but...
I think those are perfect things for an honorary mayor to do, and I think we all do a little of that ourselves, so good for you. So with that, we're not going to let you off the hook quite that easy. I'll ask my colleagues if they want to ask you a few questions, maybe have a few comments, so we'll keep you up here just a minute longer, if that's okay.
All right.
And I'm going to look to my left and start with our outgoing mayor, Susan Harvey.
Hi, welcome. Well, it sounds like you have a bright future going on, because you'll be able to put two things together. Hopefully, you can get some books going, and you'll be able to get there. Did you bring anyone with you this evening that you would like to introduce to us?
Yeah, I have my parents and my sister.
Welcome, I'm sure you're very proud of your daughters, and with that, I will let you move on.
And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Great. Well, thanks for coming, Annabelle, appreciate it. You know you have one more meeting to come to.
I know.
Okay, all right. Can't get off the hook that easy. One thing I always like to ask is, you know, we have a lot of volunteer opportunities, and I'm assuming at the middle school, my kids have been out of high school for many years now, but I assume you guys still have like a minimum of 40 community service hours you have to do?
Uh...
Do you have that at the middle school level? I know you do at the high school level.
I don't think we have that in the middle school, but they've started talking about it for high school.
Well, as you move on, at the end of the school year, you can probably start to chalk up hours before you even get into high school, so keep that in mind. And we always have a lot of stuff going on here, and always looking for volunteers, we have a lot of special events, a lot of things going on with kids, and so just kind of something to keep in mind. I'd also ask, I've sometimes called this a homework assignment, but I know that sounds really awful, so I'll try not to call it that, but if you can come back, one of the things we'd love to hear when you come back to the next meeting is if you talk to some of your friends, are there some things that, you know, you guys do regularly that are not offered in Kattati? Some of those things we can't really, you know, act on in a hurry, some things we can't act on almost at all, but there are some things that kids have suggested over the years that we've taken advantage of, and we've provided those kinds of either activities or services or something. So, you know, and if you talk to your friends and they don't have any great ideas, that's okay, too. But we'd love to hear when you come back to the next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
I can do that.
And Councilmember Moore?
Annabelle, thanks very much for coming and participating. It's always sometimes, I should say, it's sometimes difficult to follow up after Councilmember Deloso, aka Mr. Homework, so I'm not going to assign any homework for you. But I did have a question, if there is particular reading or writing styles that you had a tendency to be drawn to?
Well, I like graphic novels and stuff, because they combine like artist-y stuff and writing, and I, that's what I'd be planning to kind of do if I got the chance. I mean, I like things that build really immersive worlds and stuff, that make you really feel stuff.
Are you a fan of The Walking Dead?
I, no.
That was clear.
Yeah, isn't that one of the more famous graphic novels?
I'm not a fan of horror or anything like that.
And where were you going to high school?
The Art Quest program at Center of the High School, assuming everything goes smoothly and everything.
Perfect. We just had a project where we incorporated some of the students from the Art Quest in our northern gateway entryway on those mosaic tiles, and we used a lot of the students out of the Art Quest program, so...
Ah.
Well, I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and thank you for participating.
Thanks.
All right, and I'm going to let you go in just a second, but I want to say, first of all, interesting about the graphic novels, it's the first time I've seen somebody that shares that interest, that's something I enjoyed or was interested in, especially as a young person as well. And I think it's interesting, because what it really comes down to, as you said, that's really storytelling. You're thinking about how to position a scene, how to position a camera, there's, and what's the best way, but gestures that people would have, all these things, really, whether it's working in graphic novels, 3D animation, or working as a director or for a director, laying out shots in a movie and figuring out how to block out scenes, it's an interesting talent and certainly a needed one. So with that, I'm going to agree with my colleague to my right here, no disrespect to my colleague, the Vice Mayor, but I think for this term, at least this year, we'll get rid of the term homework. And instead, we're just going to ask you, take the polls of your peers back there, see what works for you, what you like in the community, what you value in the community, what things you think might make the community better. Those sort of general ideas would be very helpful. We'd love to hear that. And when you do come back next time, we will have a proclamation for you, so if you do bring some friends and family, we'd love to have you come up and take a picture with you to save, and most importantly, we'll have that proclamation. So we will see you in two weeks.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Annabelle. You know, people forget the most difficult thing when you're speaking, when you have a whole bunch of people in the audience looking at the back of your head, that's very difficult to do, so... All right, with that, we are moving on to approval of the final agenda, and I'll look to City Manager O'Gidde and see if we have any changes or additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. No changes.
Very good. With that, we are to item nine, which is citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I will read that any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter, matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I'm going to open into public comment, see if I have anybody who wishes to speak. Ms. Alderman, would you like to go first?
I'd like to speak on the lack of respect for laws. One of the things that I emailed you about was that somebody, Mr. Monahan or something, graded the part of the Kattati marketplace land that has the tentative map. It is the prime time when they live in the gopher tunnels that go through there, and they only come out when it rains, and this was a horrible time, and you just, he's obviously destroyed about a third of the habitat, and this, I don't, you need to be enforcing the codes and the federal laws and everything, and stop placating for the man. You were improper in doing the tentative map, it should have been denied, and then he had to figure out how to, why he was had the extension. You didn't do that, you've always been placating to him, and you need to follow and respect the federal laws on that. It is, I'm also tired of records requests being late, and Mr. Landman, or not being responsive when they're supposed to be. Mr. Landman, last year, I had two months of emails that showed that he set up with the, on personal emails with the DA, he set up George for a peeping tom charge at St. Joseph Park and Ride, and he set me up with Shirley Zane, and then I asked for nine months more of emails. I had gotten 30 pages for two months, for nine months, there was no responsive records, there was no responsive records for other people. These are all, that is not logical, and it wouldn't stand up in court, and I'm tired of the disrespect for law and the disrespect for our rights as citizens to speak, and fight, and we're just disrespected at every turn. You don't follow whatever law is before, you don't listen to us that we told you the Brown Act says each and every item, you don't do that, I'm just tired of the disrespect, and I don't look forward to this year, because I think it's going to be more contention. Thank you, bye.
And thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. Berge, please approach.
Mayor, for the benefit of the audience once again, I was elected to the city council, and you were appointed to the city council back in the day of 2010. Mayor Bob Coleman took you under his wings, and you became his lapdog for the recall campaign. You colluded with Mr. Coleman to steal campaign signs in exchange for your dastardly cooperation with the city council and their intent, they appointed you to Patcholardi's seat when you stepped down. You couldn't run as a challenger. You couldn't run against me as a challenger, because you were a nobody, you couldn't find the bathroom at City Hall back when all that was going on. You became a criminal trespasser in my neighborhood. The police made a full report, wanted to hand it up to the DA. The police chief covered all that up, told the officer to change his report or pack his things and leave. The officer still has his report and decided to quit. There have been kickbacks to the city from the marijuana dispensary to the tune of $30,000 a year, which is clearly a kickback. You spend most of your time soliciting campaign contributions through the months. Now, I live on a private street, and the mayor used to stalk me, used to come by every day, showed all that evidence to the police. He did it for months, it led to a criminal investigation, and again, the police chief covered it up, and Officer Bilsich gave all this information to the FBI. You tried to destroy people you disagree with, you defend crooked cops, and you support habitual drug drivers like Councilman John Moore. You've wasted millions of Kattati tax dollars and helped businesses close down here and leave out of disgust. You presided over a reign of terror on the homeless in Kattati and our business community. You've raised taxes, you've diverted funds from the water department for needless remodels here down the hall for a small office, to remodel a small office to the tune of $176,000. I want the public to know that. Go down there and look at it yourself. And then you spent a half million dollars across the street for that petting zoo, for the fence. I want the public to go look at it, for a fence and a walking path around that property, a half million dollars. Your psychosis, sir, has brought shame to this town. The only thing that you've done for the homeless in Kattati is smiled while you've driven by. Lori and I have been fighting for the homeless in this town, and you and the city council have done nothing, haven't spent a dime, haven't lifted a finger, while the county has done so much for the homeless.
Mr. Berge?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to speak in consent?
Um, no, sir.
Very good, thank you. And I'm sorry, I should have asked you, Ms. Alderman, did you want to speak in consent while you were here?
No.
Very good, thank you. All right, let's see. I have a card from Mr. Kirchman. I'm not clear, is this the item you wanted to speak on? I'm going to guess it's public comment.
Public comment, yes.
Please, come for it.
Over here, there's a sign, excuse me, which says, "Staff in official use only." This kitchen was remodeled for over $50,000, but I kind of like that there's a sign there. There used to be staff, they'd line up along here, they didn't line up, they were sitting in chairs comfortably, as they now sit in the audience, but... in chairs comfortably as they now sit in the audience, but they were close here, so when they were needed, they could step up and do their job. I assume that's why staff is here, because they're somewhat separate from the audience. They pass papers, they giggle, they tell stories, they swear, they talk about audience members, and they have their cell phones on and are playing games. So I'm assuming they're somewhat separate from the audience. So I would suggest simply, as you have media separated, and you have other groupings separated, that you have your staff alongside here in a professional fashion, as many councils do in public, where they can step up and work as needed, and where they can easily converse with each other side by side, instead of turning and disrupting the audience and disrupting what we're trying to do here. For over thirty years, staff sat there. Why shouldn't they sit there? Because the cushions are more comfortable in the back? Because it's a better vantage point if there's a shooting to take place, i.e. in the back, which is now history that we shoot people in the back in Kattati? I'd prefer them being here where everyone can see them, where they're visible to the public who can't, for whatever reason, come here. Over thirty years, your staff was there. You now have two staff members there, why not have all your staff there instead of talking trash about the public and otherwise screwing around during your meetings? I can't photograph them because I'd have to be over here in the media to photograph them, but if they're over here, it would make perfect sense and function. When Mr. Deloso was a council member, they were sitting there. It makes sense. Every now and again, you should try to do what makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchman. All right, let's see. And I have a card here from Richard Singhouse. Welcome, Richard.
Good evening. I'd like to start by just saying thank you for all the service to outgoing Mayor Harvey and also our current Vice Mayor and Mayor. I know it's extra work, and I appreciate it, and to all the council members, present and otherwise. I came to say thank you for having provided the free access to electric car charging for the past while for many of us as we were looking into adopting electric vehicles as our main means of driving. Having that kind of infrastructure is particularly helpful for those of us who live in multifamily housing, where it's hard for us to install chargers in our own places, so we end up having to use just the trickle chargers, which isn't always enough. And so having that faster Level Two charger made a big difference, and it's one of the reasons why we ended up picking up a car and using that. And I see that you have your annual report for the Sonoma Clean Power at the back. I know one of our main goals is to bring down CO2, that's partly why that, or that's one of the main reasons that organization began, and this was a nice partnership. So thank you for that. I also wanted to say, it was nice to be able to speak to Mr. Deloso sitting there in the, in the audience with us, because I like the idea of us being all one group and being able to talk with each other, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. And let's see, I have three that came in at the same time. Tony Geraldi, I'll let you decide, I will give you the, the idea of what order you wish to speak in, or would you like to come together? What's going to work best for you?
I'll have to say these first, but...
Then let's do it, we'll do it, whatever you guys think is best.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon, Vice Mayor Deloso, distinguished members of the city council. My name's Tony Geraldi, I'm the General Operations Manager with Sonoma County Airport Express. Airport Express is the primary sponsor of the Miss Sonoma County Scholarship Program, a program that's been here in Sonoma County for seventy-two years. It's been, benefited over a thousand young ladies with scholarship money for future education, and I am here to personally invite you to our seventy-second Miss Sonoma County Competition taking place on Saturday, March 3rd, at the Sparkles Performing Arts Center in Roanoke Park. Last year, we had twenty-seven elected officials in the audience, and our former mayor, Aaron Gattati, Susan Harvey was there, and all the elected officials get introduced. We've got a tremendous group of ladies that will be competing this year, we had our first rehearsal, rehearsal on Sunday, and this is going to be a great year, it's going to turn out to be a really nice competition. Every contestant is going to walk away with some scholarship money, and then two of the young ladies will become, well, one will become our seventy-second Miss Sonoma County, and one will become our eighth Miss Sonoma County's outstanding teen. The, throughout the year, they'll be making appearances all over Sonoma County, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, events, a lot of variety. Just this past, two weeks ago, they presented a basket to the first baby born in Sonoma County, it's an annual tradition that the program does, and it's partnered with the Press Democrat, they do a story on it, and it's, and also they'll be representing Sonoma County at the state competition in Fresno in June to compete for Miss California and Miss California's outstanding teen. And then if we're lucky enough, they'll be representing not only Sonoma County but California at national competition of Miss America and Miss America's outstanding teen. Again, we'd love to have you in the audience, have some representatives as far as our elected officials here in Kattati, our competition, and thank you very much for your time.
You're quite welcome. Let me just confirm, was that seventy-two years, your seventy-second annual?
Seventy-second. It's the longest-running program under the Miss California organization without a break, so...
Amazing. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Geraldi.
And our program is recognized under the Miss California organization for our title holders being so involved in the community, so, thank you.[990.12][990.12](applause)
And I believe our next speaker is Emily Wang from Santa Rosa, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good, welcome.
Hi, my name is Emily Wong, I'm Miss Sonoma County's outstanding teen, 2017. I am a junior at Santa Rosa High School, and I'm the seventh Miss Sonoma County's outstanding teen, 2017, oh, I already said 2017, but, one of my favorite appearances, one of actually my second appearance, was the Kattati Annual Kids Parade, where we had also our princess program and all the princesses come and join us for this little parade, and it was definitely very fun, it was my very first parade, and also, as I said before, second appearance. And it was definitely a memorable one, I remember, I actually lived in Kattati like my first three months from when I was born, it was just right down the street, and we just drove past my old house. It was really nice, and it was very fun mixing and mingling with all the Kattati residents, and hanging out with the children, and also getting introduced on stage. I remember meeting all of the council members at the parade and being, taking part in that. Over the past couple of months, I've realized how great Sonoma County is and how supportive and beautiful this county truly is, and it's a pleasure to be representing myself, representing the county as, for the teen population. I've made, I think we counted about fifty appearances so far since July, and the Kattati Parade was definitely one to remember. Thank you.
And let's see, I believe our next speaker is Christina Schmull from Santa Rosa as well, welcome.
Thank you, and you pronounced my last name right, which is, never happens during parades, I've gotten every variation, so, I'm Christina Schmull, I'm twenty-three years old, and I'm the seventy-first Miss Sonoma County. It's definitely been an exciting year, we recently counted number of appearances, and I think this is my hundred-and-fourteenth appearance that I've made so far this year, so I'm on track to make about, or at least a hundred and thirty, I can imagine, but I remember meeting all of you guys at the Kattati Kids' Day Parade, and that was a really fun appearance, and Congressman Thompson was here, and we got a funny, a couple funny photos. Definitely, definitely, if you can, come to the competition in March, even if you don't know anybody, it's still exciting, and I think this year, we have three contestants from Kattati, so two teens and one miss, so even more reason, hope, cheer them on, hope that they become one of the winners. Definitely, in my future, after this year, going to so many different community events and representing Sonoma County, I would love to be an elected official in Sonoma County, so I definitely have a lot to learn, but, and I know it's a long process, but that's my overall goal, because I love working for the public and doing public service, and that's what Miss Sonoma County is about. It's definitely a year of service, and it's not always stuff that you would ever imagine you'd be doing, or some days you don't feel like necessarily getting dressed and speaking with people, but as soon as you're out there and talking with people and making people happy, you definitely are excited to be there. I would like to ask you if we could get a photo with myself and Emily before we head on with our night, if that's okay?
When you're done with your comments, and when we're done with public comment, I, we'd be happy to do that, certainly.
Okay, perfect, yeah, and I think that is all I have to say, and thank you guys, congratulations to outgoing and incoming mayor.
Thank you. All right, thank you.[1224.16][1224.16](applause) All right, for I close public comment, I'm going to look around very quickly one more time and see if anybody else would like to speak, and seeing nobody, I will close public comment, and we'll take a quick break to get a picture, because historically, we do that every year when you guys come to visit, so we don't want to break the, the chains, so we'll do that. We can step down now? wants to pull any items, or do I have a motion?
Mayor, Mayor Lammon, I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications on the citizen's business, if I may?
If you'd like to, please.
There was a comment made by, I believe it was Mr. Barich regarding filling a term of paternity, I don't think that that was actually what occurred. I filled the term of paternity when she stepped down and retired after, I believe Mayor Lammon filled the term of council member...
Mayor Gardino.
Gardino, right, after he stepped down.
That's true.
Right. So, and there's another comment there. I'll, I'll leave it at that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Certainly.
Just for the record.
And I'll look to see, make sure we're good to go ahead. Very good. This time, we really are up to consent calendar, item ten, and I will ask my colleagues if we have any items they'd like to pull, or if I have a motion.
Move to approve items A, B, and C?
Second.
A motion to second from Vice Mayor Deloso and Councilmember Harvey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's four zero one with one absence, is carried. Very good. And I'll ask my colleagues for item eleven, if anybody here tonight in the council wishes to give any direction on future agenda items this evening?
I have an item.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
It might be more of a question for staff, doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item, but I'm curious where we are with street lighting retrofitting, and if there's, you know, more work going on. I, I don't know that this needs to be a future agenda item, but, and I know I'm getting older, but there's one corner, when I drive home from these meetings, that is so incredibly dark, and I don't know if it's a lack of light, if it's trees, and so I'm sure there's other areas in the city, but do we need to have an agendized item, or is that just something maybe we can cover under...
We might have a, we, I wouldn't be surprised to see an update of that in the very next item, or very quickly in City Manager's report, unless you'd like to cover it now, City Manager Obit?
It can wait till then.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think it needs to be a future agenda item, I just want to make sure I captured it before I forgot it.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get that done. All right, with that then, we have no regular agenda items tonight, so that takes us directly to item thirteen, which is the City Manager's report. Mr. Obit?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I will make this really quick, famous last words. So on the lighting, on the lighting project, we do have a, we do have a lighting project. I don't know if it's going to address the specific corners but, that we're talking about, but the areas that the lighting project covers is La Plaza Park, where the bandstand is, that we talked about at an agendized meeting, as well as relighting the tunnel on East School, and the pedestrian bridge at McGinnis is in the pathway as well, and also the pathway between McGinnis and Marsh, so. That's the scope of the lighting project, it should be going up to bid very soon, I'm expecting this month, and then we'd be bringing it to council for award, I'm expecting in February. And then, just on some other news, the, the holiday toy drive is done, and we, that's a joint effort between, well, it's the Rotary Club and Ranch Adobe Fire District and the Kattati Police Department. And they deliver, Santa gets in the cars and delivers presents to kids that families put in requests, and then they deliver presents to the kids, and I am told by the chief that they delivered three-hundred-and-fifty presents this year. So, quite a few. It's a very good, it's a great program, and continues to see a lot of need out there. And then rec updates, we had some winter camps that just wrapped up after all the schools went back into session this week, and we had twenty-four spots available on each, this is between Christmas and New Year's, and then the first week of the new year, and they were, they were really full, we had, I believe, twenty-two kids one week and twenty-three kids the next week. So our camps continue to grow, which is great news, and it's good that, you know, it's, it's obvious that there was a need, so it's great that we were able to offer that. And also, there's, there are some plays coming up, which we will be putting out information on, I won't get into all the details tonight, but we'll be getting that out. And then on January twentieth, there's the public workshop on the Rhonda Fletty Ranch that we talked about last November, I think it was, we were talking about doing that. And so January twentieth is when the workshop will be, at 1:00 PM, and we're going to talk about potential programming options for that, for that park. So I hope to see everyone there. And then also, we're running a photo contest, and this is, you'll find the link on the city's webpage on the, under the headlines, where you can submit photos. And we're looking for, we're looking for photos of, of what people love about Kattati, and what they, you know, what they find unique about Kattati, what makes Kattati different than anywhere, anywhere else on earth. So if you have any photos like that, please click on the webpage headline and submit photos, and the lucky winners could be featured on our new webpage, our new website, potentially streetlight banners, newsletters, and maybe more, so. If you have them, please submit them. And we had, lastly, I'll just say, we had the Parent Project, which is a program for, for at-risk youth that the police department ran, and they just graduated in December. Ex-Mayor Harvey was there at the graduation, and it's a, it's a wonderful program for, where the police bring in the parents, and they teach them about, you know, about, just ways to maybe better communicate with their children to try to get the at-risk youth on the right path, so they don't end up in the criminal justice system ultimately. So that was the inaugural class, and it was, it was well-received by all the attendees, so it was a good job by all. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager?
I don't have any questions, citizen.
Please.
For the workshop on the twentieth, can we make sure that we get that on the marquee and out on our social media, so that people are aware of that ahead, ahead of time, so they can plan accordingly?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We're, we've already started, and we're also, in addition to those, we're also direct mailing everyone around the property.
Okay, thank you.
So, hopefully, they're going to fill the, we're going to pack this place, that's what we're hoping for.
Good, very good. Anybody else from the council? No, seeing that, okay. We're now to city council member reports, and I'm going to start right over here to my right with Councilmember Moore.
I do not have any additional reports at this time, although there is a annual resident employment municipal insurance on... Grand Empire Municipal Insurance Meeting at the end of the month. And we are still working with our new director for Remit, and that's going pretty well. So that's my report on that at this point.
Very good. And I jump right over to this side, and we'll look over to the outgoing mayor.
Okay, as the City Manager said, I attended the graduation for the Parent Project. It was really heartening to see the changes that had been made in some of the families. They really appreciate the program, and they have said that their family life, just, you know, how they, as a family, act differently with, with that training has been pretty amazing. When doing a little research to find out a little bit more about it, I also found that they have a program for the younger kids, this is for 11 through 19-year-olds, but they also have a program that apparently our facilitators are allowed to teach. So I, I'm going to suggest, when we get into planning, that we also look to do a program for the younger kids, 'cause I think that the earlier you get the information that you need, that was one of the comments that one of the parents made, that they wished that they had had this training and this knowledge earlier, and they might not have gotten where they, where they were with their families. But definitely, the class appreciated with it, and thank you, Chief, for bringing that program to our community. I think it was very well-received. I also attended the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and basically, the only item of note was, they're gonna be doing rebranding and redoing their website. It's very confusing for residents. They get a lot of calls thinking that the Waste Management Agency is the hauler, and so they, I mean, literally, they get thousands of phone calls, and, you know, those get redirected, so they're gonna do a little bit more to look at rebranding. And obviously, as we have been going through updating the website, so it works on more, more platforms, they have a very, very old antiquated website right now that currently gets updated by the county, and the county basically charges them an arm and a leg to, to update it, so they're gonna bring that into. And I just found out today that I somehow got nominated to be on a subcommittee to work on that, so I guess I'll be finding a little bit more about that. And then, I'm sure that Vice Mayor Deloso's going to talk a little bit more about it, but the California Homemakers Association, they did their food drive, and it was really, it was really pretty awesome, the work that got done, and how quickly it got done, but I'll let you talk about that, but I did attend that. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I think that's a perfect segue to the Vice Mayor.
And I wasn't gonna say anything about it, but I guess I will, no, I'm kidding, of course I was. So, yeah, on December 23rd, we had, and I better now start keeping track of this, because I'm already forgetting, fourth or fifth annual holiday food drive right over here in the old classrooms, and it's with a group called the California Homemakers Association, and they have many people who sign up, these are people who are very low-income countywide, and they sign up through the group for these food boxes that are created, and they're very impressive food boxes, 'cause they're very healthy food boxes. They have fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, you know, frozen turkeys, frozen ham, and then some occasional canned goods and things like that, and other staples. So this year, we put together just under 100 boxes, then those, after those were assembled, which took an hour, it usually takes like three hours to assemble these, but it took an hour, there were more volunteers than we've ever had, I'll be honest with you, so, which was great. And, and then they get distributed, people, it's a very systematic approach of, you know, you have box 12A, and here's who that belongs to, you have to get somebody to sign for that box when you deliver it at their residence, and then that paperwork has to get turned back into California Homemakers. So it's a very organized system. They do these countywide, year-round, it's not just, you know, around the Christmas holidays. So, and I really want to thank, I did speak to Oliver's Market, and I had asked for four or five 50-pound cases of fresh fruits and vegetables, something that could not get bruised easily enough. So, you know, I gave them some suggestions. So when I went to pick them up that morning, they had 10 cases available, which was like alarming, because I'm not sure how I crammed them all in my vehicle, but they all got in there somehow, so it was really great. And also, Pete of Kattati donated a couple of large cardboard carafes of coffee for the volunteers. So I spoke with the mayor before the meeting, I'd like to draft a letter, and I'll send it to you and Lauren, for the mayor's signature, just thanking the two of them. There, there could be other businesses in Kattati, but not that I had contacted, so. Anyway, it was another great event, and I'm sure we'll continue to do this event, but we were cleaned up and out of those classrooms, floor cleaned by 2:00. It was amazing. If it goes that smoothly every year, this is gonna go on forever. Anyway, that's what I had to report out, so thank you.
Nice. Well, I only have one thing to report. Obviously, like most of us, it's been the Christmas season, the holiday season, we've been, haven't been having as many meetings. The only one I recently had is, we did have a Sonoma Clean Power meeting last week, and I believe we had that mostly just because we were putting out our 2017 annual report. I have copies of that, which I have given to staff, they're up here on the dais for the council, there's one in back for the public, if you wish to look at it. And I just wanted to briefly hit some of the validated 2016 results, 'cause I think they're interesting. The 2016 results are validated there, 'cause it takes a while to get all the data in from, for example, PG&E, to do comparisons, to as close as you can get to apples, to apples comparisons of how we're doing and what we're generating. So here's just about six, seven quick points off this page. In terms of community giving, in other words, supportive community events and various things throughout Sonoma County, Sonoma Clean Power's invested almost $160,000 in that year. We saved almost $200,000, 196, 153 metric tons of carbon dioxide. That's equivalent of about 42,000 cars off the road. And that measurement is just based on the difference in emission factors between PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power. That has nothing to do with the additional savings we've generated by increasing EVs in this county roughly by 20% in the last two years. We've delivered almost 2 million megawatts of clean energy to Sonoma County. We're serving 88% of the eligible customers in this county. In terms of keeping money in this county, two last things I'll share with you, 'cause I think these are some of my favorite parts. $573, $764 paid to customers for excess solar generation. So basically, if you have solar, you're seeing better checks from us, and, and that's good, we want to see that. And lastly, the slight savings in the bill we offer individually isn't much, but as I often say, in the aggregate, it's quite a bit. And that totaled up to $8.8 million that stays in our county. So I thought this was worth sharing, 'cause it strikes me that it was five years ago, many of us, all of us actually sitting right here, sat in this very room and struggled as the second city to look at this, to make the leap to this risky new partnership with the, especially with the Board of Supervisors, that's something that cities often easily do. And I look at where we are now, I'm glad we were willing to make that step, so I wanted to share that with you and everybody tonight. All right, and let's see, so that takes care of City Council Reports. We are to item 15, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. And I have no cards, Ms. Alderman, would you like to lead us off tonight? Please.
First, I'm really upset that we have another commercial for Sonoma Clean Power embashing PG&E. Mr. Landman, your house was saved by PG&E for, three and a half years ago, and I am so tired of hearing about Sonoma Clean Power in these council meetings. And don't smirk at me. Okay, so my emotions are really high right now, because I'm really tired of it. Why we do not have a regular agenda item? When, two, two meetings ago, we had 644 pages. We had 29 pages for today. We, what do you guys not plan, anything? Did you just decide last week, we'll put stuff together? You're not dealing with the flow of things, of, and also, everything you had to do in November and December had to do with money. Could you have at least put something on the agenda that had to do with services, with giving back to the citizens? Everything you're doing lately is generating money for the city and generating for yourselves, and I'm really tired of it. I'm tired, I don't, I don't like in the announcements that the, this whole thing about the meeting orientation, it puts you guys on a pedestal, and I'm tired of you guys being on a pedestal. Your comments are not any much, any better than ours, you're not better people than we are. And you're writing things in here that shouldn't, had nothing to do, it's another thing to discourage public comment. You could have put a little note in the back on how to do a meeting and orientation. You don't have to sit here and lecture to us every time in these announcements. A contest for the photo contest, you usually have a prize, Mr., you'd have nothing. You could have put recreation class or $50 credit, but no, you just, you put, that's how you mince words. A photo contest has, a contest has a prize. I'm just tired of everything, and I don't look forward to this year, 'cause I don't think you're getting any better, you're not listening, and I'm just frustrated as hell. And please, no more Sonoma Clean Power commercials.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. Anybody else like to speak on non-action items? Mr. Barretts, please approach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, first like to speak on the City Manager's Report. One of the first things that Damian said when he offered his report was, you know, we want to make this quick. And it wasn't really a quick report, but I want to remind the council and city staff that I look forward to a long and comprehensive report from the City Manager of the state of our city, what's going on, what needs to be done. I'm not bored by his reports, I'm not trying to get home by 8:30 at night. I appreciate it, and I tell Damian when his reports are comprehensive and thorough. And I want to tell him as a taxpayer, he has no, gets no advice from me to quicken things up. Secondly, I'd like to state there's, I'd like to see a written report of the complaints that Damian receives from the public. I'd like to hear the accolades, the thank yous, the attaboys, and the complaints. I think they should be printed out, they should be put in the back of the room. When I was on the city council, I could not even get, get a hold or to see any of the complaints that were being filed against the city for a lack of services or for whatever. So I decided to hold office hours out front on Monday nights from about 5:00 to 7:00, and people were coming in telling me that they had complaints that were being ignored by the city. We had to handhold those complaints over to Diane Thompson to find out what's going on, 'cause the council wasn't here about, abouting them, and they were burying those complaints at the City Manager level, and it's wrong. If you want to have a transparent city hall and city government, you need to bring these complaints and the thank yous forward for the, for public review. It's been 10 years, and we still can't do that. I'd also like to talk about the announcements tonight. I think that right there, you should have been asked while we had a full room, that on January 20th, we have an important workshop here. We don't want necessarily just want your friends and lackeys to be here, we want really independent, concerned citizens who have a stake in this town to understand you have an important workshop coming up. That should be in the announcements, not at the end of the night. I'd also like to talk on future agenda items. I would like it very much to see, in my lifetime, that you put on the agenda, what in the hell are you gonna do about the homeless in Kattati that are outside freezing in the cold and getting wet, because you haven't lifted a finger or spent a dime to help the homeless? I'd like to see you put that on the, on the agenda. Because you're not doing these things, this is, Kattati is a town that is not moving forward. It's a town in decline. You are responsible for this. We've been trying to coach you and show you and lead you to make Kattati a better town, and you, people are just failing.
Let's turn that on. Thank you, Mr. Barretts. Would anybody else like to speak on non-action agenda items? Mr. Kirchman, please approach.
First of all, I'd like to thank former Mayor Harvey for her year of service. I welcome you, Mr. Landman, for your future year. But especially, I want to thank Vice Mayor Deloso for stepping out of his home, walking around, seeing the community, and seeing that there are more than one or two dark spaces. It's nice that the City Manager knows about a few areas, but when you mention McGinnis and the crossover, there's more than one. McGinnis goes also over to La Salle and Loretto, that light has been out for half a year. I realize, according to Ms. Parker, that city staff doesn't get downtown very often. The problem is, you have a city that needs to be maintained. It should be maintained at a level above 1963 qualifications, and unfortunately, it's not happening. You have property across the street, I can't call it the Falletti property, because it's not. They sold it to you. It's dark. Walk down Rancho, think if you enjoy walking there, it's not really comfortable. You're gonna handle under the freeway? That's been there how long, folks? Try to maintain what you have, and try to improve what you have. City lighting is a simple function. It shouldn't be something that takes a month to replace one light. It's something you should do on a regular basis. The City Manager and his staff should take care of it as part of their job, not be reactive when it comes before you. Mr. Deloso is right, no one should be in the dark, people should be able to walk around. I don't want to use individuals' names, but Ms. Nixon was here today. She's come before you three times, asking for lighting in your least downtown parking area, which right now is overflowing and is dangerous to drive by, and it's dark, because it's left up to individual business owners to light, and the city's done nothing to address that. So you need to start addressing it. When people come before you, don't just smile, nod, pretend that you're a little dog in behind the backseat of a car going, bobbing up and down, direct your staff to do something. Unfortunately, my voice is telling you that it's a little emotional, because you don't direct your staff. You smile and say, oh, we're done with this meeting, let's move on. It's time to start holding your staff accountable, having street lighting, having things safe, having things reasonable, and having them at least a level of 1980 Kattati, maybe 1990, because unfortunately, in the last 16 years, you have less business, less reality, less function here, and it's rather distressing.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchman. And I'm gonna look one more time, anybody else? I think I have one person left in the audience, would you like to speak? No? All right, then we're gonna close that. And we see, I'm gonna ask if we have any information received after the agenda was posted. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:23. Thank you very much, everybody, and we'll see you next time.